Good evening and welcome to the November Town Council meeting for the town of Garrett Park. All this meeting to order, the time is seven thirty-one. You have in front of you the agenda. Are there any changes, any requests or changes, modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we're gonna consider that approved without objection. Minutes, we have two sets of minutes, first from the September twelfth council meeting, and second from the October tenth council meeting. With the September twelfth council meeting, we had already sent these back once and gotten the changes made. Are there any any additional changes, or can we approve these from September twelve? All those in favor of approving the September twelfth council minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Okay. Those are approved, and the October tenth council minutes. We
I wanted to make, I read the RFP that Barb's working on, I just wanna make sure that what the RFP says now, and I just wanna make sure this is what the, what the council decided, is that we're talking about including in the RFP a section that says that they're gonna look at or give us some a proposal for the
So I wanna, I wanna just pause for a second because that's sort of separate from the minutes.
Isn't that the minutes, though, that we're talking about?
Um, yes, but that's, like, we're looking at the accuracy of the minutes, not necessarily, not the RFP itself.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure that, okay.
So, um,
That's fine.
Is there anything in how these minutes are written that gives you, or that you think is not accurate to what was
Well, I just wanna make sure that we're not, that the minutes didn't approve moving the town, the existing town hall.
Of course not, no, absolutely not. There was absolutely no
Not including that.
There is absolutely, there's been absolutely no approval or disapproval or any talk about
For what's gonna be in the RFP.
Right, and even what's in the RFP does not authorize any action for the direction of of renovating
Okay.
town hall. Okay. Any other questions about the October tenth minutes? Okay, all right. All those in favor of approving the October tenth minutes?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, not hearing any, the minutes for the October tenth meeting are approved. Keep track of the time, the time is seven thirty-four, and we are ready to move on to presentations by residents. We have anybody who'd like to come to the mic and speak, we would welcome you. We ask that you give your name and address and then speak clearly into the mic and
Hey, yeah, I'm Seth Seidman, I'm at one one four oh two Rokeby Ave, and it's been very apparent since the light changed, since the daylight savings change, that it's extremely dark outside of our house there. And it seems like one of the lights isn't working on our street, and it also seems, I walked up, at least all of Rokeby, and it seems that there are lights between every two houses for the rest of Rokeby, but right there, in front of my house, it seems to be, it's four houses. So even if the other light was operational, which it isn't, I think it'd still be extremely dark. It just seems dangerous, people walking around and kids and other things, and so just wanted to bring it to the town's attention.
Okay, so, um, we, Barb, do you wanna speak to the outage?
Yes, I think Seth, I had emailed you, I did report the outage to Pepco. Typically, they have up to, like, their general timeframe is fifteen days, so I should receive an automatic notification when it's handled. If it's not addressed by early next week, though, I'll kind of move it to the governmental affairs division and see if we can expedite that.
Okay, they actually came out today.
They did.
And they were working on it, but as I walk here today, it still wasn't working, so I don't know if there's a bigger problem than just replacing a bulb, or I don't know what it is.
Well, I'm glad at least they came out quickly. My understanding of the gap in the lights is that at some point in the distant past, when those lights were going in, there was a resident who did not want a light in front of their home, and that's why there's a gap between, such a long distance between two of the lights.
And the same thing at my house, I think it's like six or seven.
Yeah, I noticed it, we tripped on the way over here, right around your house because it was so dark. I mean, it seems to me that we probably shouldn't listen to residents, and there should be some sort of standard,
Right.
you know, illumination needed for, you know, square yard or something, you had to make sure that
They're not the only two places either, on my street as well.
What does that?
I said they're not the only two places on our street as well, on Claymont Place.
Yeah.
So what would be the process, well, is this, we should look into what the process would be, are we saying council, would you like for us to look into this, and is this a big picture thing we wanna look at? Is all the lights in town, and just sort of check on the spacing of them? Part of the issue, part, I don't know to what extent all, but part of the issue is that we don't own, we own some of the lights, we don't own all of them, some of it's Pepco.
Is there a process where we can request Pepco to add lights?
We can, it's my experience from my days in Tacoma Park is it does take a while, but you go through Pepco's engineering division, I can certainly follow up with them and just get an idea of what the process is and what the associated cost would be.
We probably should first do a survey of what lights we're talking about in the town.
I think, I think the two things can happen simultaneously, one's just really reaching out to Pepco and asking for an explanation. Certainly, we could probably ask the maintenance staff, Frank typically works later, so it's dark this time of year, and just ask him to kinda do an informal survey, but I imagine if any residents are listening to this meeting, we might get some feedback without much solicitation.
But do we want to take a survey, not just of what lights are out, but where these gaps are that we
Well, that's what I meant.
Generationally don't, no longer want there to be.
Would it, would it be more useful to actually have a walking tour of Garrett Park? And just notice all the spaces on a map where there are these darker spots?
In the dark.
Yeah.
Yes, well, take a flashlight.
Usually there is a, like a set rule for that, like a certain amount of bookcases at the surface, and if there are gaps, there should be an engineering way to kind of note, like, where all those gaps are, and then we can address.
And I noticed personally that some, there are lights in some spaces, and they just don't work.
Yeah.
And I've also, I've noticed too, that when it's cold out, there's some that don't work. The other thing we have to consider is that our lights are kind, we have to get a specific fixture for anything that we put in that's new, we should be considering LEDs at some point.
We have been slowly switching out some of the lights along Strathmore to LEDs, those are, obviously are lights, as many of you know.
Right.
So we've been sort of doing it when we have enough of them that we can aggregate just for cost reasons, but we have made quite a bit of progress on Strathmore, switching them over.
Phil, wasn't there something like two years ago, or three years ago, about the polar lights that they were changing? So never passed.
They never passed.
About, are we talking
So there was, Alkar brought up a thing where he want, basically, it was going to be a they're gonna put in place a law which allowed towns to basically buy all their lights from Pepco, retain, be able to retain them, or they could go with Pepco converting them to LEDs, but if they did, they'd now be charged at a higher rate than what it was in the past, especially for us, we had a much lower rate. So, at the end of the day, after looking at all over, basically, I felt that it was six one halves on the other, because we'd be paying a higher rate for something that we could probably go ahead and do ourselves, the biggest thing was trying to get ownership of all the fixtures.
Yeah, if I may to kind of add on to what Phil said, as he indicated, Alkar has taken a bill before the legislature, I think practically every year that he's been in office. But Pepco did go before the Public Service Commission asking for a tariff increase, and as part of that process, their tariff increase was denied, and they were essentially ordered by the Public Service Commission to sit down with the municipalities and try to agree on a process to determine the fair market value for anyone who wanted to purchase the lights. I think as Phil said, even kind of sitting in on some of those meetings, it's been a bit of a challenge for all the municipalities talking to Pepco about that.
Am I missing something, or they want to charge municipalities more for more efficient lights, so they would say get more money twice?
I think if anyone who wanted to buy the lights and basically be able to service them themselves, a lot of the issue came down to, how do you determine what the value is? If Pepco were to sell its fixtures to the municipalities, and determining what that value is, obviously, it's in Pepco's interest to inflate that value and not in the interest of municipalities for them to do that. But as Phil said, it's quite an undertaking to purchase out a streetlight system and to be able to service that yourself.
And they were, they were gonna put the LEDs in quote-unquote for free, but
Charge a higher rate.
Exactly.
So, we didn't solve everything, but I think we've got the starting of a roadmap to try to help you out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to make a presentation? Okay, give your name and address, please.
I'm Michael Kearney, one one four zero five Rokeby Avenue. One, I, we can, we live across street from Seth, we completely endorse what he just said about darkness. We both have children, and at this time of year, it's very, very dangerous, especially with the increased use of DoorDash and Uber, people who don't know the community driving through. But I'd like to broaden it beyond just light to visibility. Because of where we live, Kennelworth, as some of you probably know, is blocked off at Rokeby for some reason. And as a result, we have to go out and make a left turn onto Kennelworth, and almost every intersection where you turn onto Kennelworth, there is something obscuring your visibility as to oncoming traffic. And I know the town has an ordinance about this, but it's never seems to have been enforced, and I'm not saying that there needs to be, you know, kind of police action, but I do think that we need to ensure that drivers can see, because the combination of the lighting, which is dismal, the lack of visibility, the lack of sidewalks, and the darkness, I mean, it's just a recipe for a disaster, and we really don't wanna see that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that is something that we are working on, and I hope that we can move in that direction quickly. So, thank you, appreciate that. Any other resident presentations, anyone on Zoom? Keen to speak?
Does not appear to be.
Okay, then we will move on to the town manager's report, the time is seven forty-three.
Thank you, included in your agenda packet is the financial report for the month of October. It's still relatively early in the fiscal year, so there's usually not too much of note, a couple of things that I did wanna call out. This report does incorporate the changes that you all authorized through Budget Amendment One, which you adopted in October. All of the changes included in Budget Amendment One concerned work associated with the town-owned property located at one one three two one Kennelworth Avenue, which is the former Yendel property. Also wanted to note for you that in account five point four, this is a revenue account entitled Other Receipts, that balance does reflect the eighteen thousand one hundred dollars we received from the sale of a two thousand and four dump truck. I think we got roughly a dozen bids, the successful bidder actually was from Indiana and actually sent someone to pick up the truck.
Which I wanna say, that's, I'm really glad that George took the initiative to try to, you know, I don't know how long that truck had been sitting there, but certainly wasn't doing us any good, and and the fact that we got eighteen thousand dollars for it is pretty great.
It's a number. Yeah, this is one of the few times that the supply chain disruptions actually worked in our favor, when you're trying to sell equipment that no one can get. Lastly, on the capital budget, I did wanna just highlight for you all that there are two accounts that are in negative balances. One is twenty-seven point four, the community center, the other is twenty-nine point two for the Arboretum. As you may recall, earlier this year, you all had commissioned some work to be done at the community center specifically replacing the asphalt path. This is something that was our financial responsibility at least one time under the lease. So we basically went ahead and proceeded with that work in the interest of time, but we just need to make an adjustment at mid-year. In terms of account number twenty-nine point two for the Arboretum, what you're seeing year-to-date was the cost of the removal of the large willow hogs on Oxford. Because of the location of those trees, we did pay a little extra because of needed traffic control. I did also wanna note for you that while we're already in a negative balance, we also recently removed some other diseased and dying trees. So on top of the negative balance that you see now, there'll be about another fourteen thousand and twenty-five dollars showing up in that account. So we have been doing a lot of work on the Arboretum this year, both in terms of tree pruning and just trying to remove any trees that were deemed by the arbers to be a hazard, so these will all be accounts that will be brought into line when we introduce the mid-year budget adjustment ordinance next month.
And do we sort of have it in our mind to consider when we're working on the next budget, that we more accurately maybe budget some extra money?
Yeah, I think it's just, we're probably pretty up to date for the most part on routine pruning, except for Strathmore, which obviously is still tied to the need to initiate another MOU with SHA. I will be talking to the arborist just about, you know, any recommendation he has in terms of just bumping up accounts going forward.
Great.
Just a few other items in the interest of time, the personnel manual, which you discussed at your meeting in October, that is, Kayla has incorporated the changes that you all agreed to in concept, and that is now in legal review. The goal is to bring the personnel manual back before you for adoption at your December meeting, if all goes smoothly. We've also, as I noted, have been doing a lot of tree work, the most recent round of removal of any trees was ten, and that work was done by Empire Landscape, you probably have seen Bartlett Tree Experts around town, they're one of the three companies that we have under contract. They were selected this round to do the tree pruning, the deadwood removal, and kind of the elevation work above the street. So, as I said, we should be in pretty good shape, except for Strathmore, at least for the time being.
Is there any update on when Strathmore will be resolved, waiting on SHA?
No, at this point, it's waiting on me, I need to basically fill out the paperwork and submit that to SHA, my goal is to have that done by the end of this month. And then generally, it takes SHA anywhere from three to six months to probably process an MOU, they're certainly well acquainted with the issue, because I needed to talk to them about what other forms I needed to fill out, so I'm hoping it'll go on the shorter end of that timeframe than the longer.
Any, any sense of whether they would reimburse us, I mean, I certainly don't want any work to be put off in a dangerous way, if
Right. My hope is that we can have the state continue to pay for any tree removals, because candidly, there's no benefit to us of paying for that, pruning. I think it's probably unlikely that they will reimburse us, but I think it's still within the town's best interest just to be able to prune in the way that we deem most appropriate. The other part of the request that I'm going to submit is we have been mowing the right-of-way along Strathmore for many, many years, but we haven't requested that the state reimburse us for that, and that is a process that they have in place. So those will be the, I guess, what my goal is in terms of trying to structure something with them. I think lastly, I just wanted to update you all on the invasive vine shrub removal pilot project, this was something that was spearheaded by the Arboretum Committees, particularly Adam Darkins. So you may recall that earlier this year, we had basically done some work, Residential Reforestation LLC, which is the company we hired, was back out earlier this month to basically cut and treat non-native shrubs, this would include things such as bush honeysuckle invasive vine burnums, and they did all the work in Cambria Park. I did wanna note for anyone who kind of walks in the park, the shrubs were deliberately cut and left, it's not that we forgot about them. Over time, the maintenance staff may haul out the remnants and ship them, we don't wanna do that right now because there are berries still present. And since the ships are used all over town, all we'd be doing is basically creating invasives elsewhere in town. Then my understanding, according to the arborists, it will take a few years for basically the remnants of those non-native shrubs to decay in place, so I just didn't want anyone to think that we weren't finishing up the work.
But with the berries, I just don't understand, I don't know how this works, but if we don't wanna incorporate the berries into the wood chips, does leaving them where they are?
They've been sprayed, so they will basically decay and not basically regrow again, but if we basically chip them and then put them back out in town, and people are using the wood chips, they will likely see that the non-invasive shrubs grow and potentially in their yards.
Hmm, okay.
So we're just trying to not create a problem elsewhere. Well, Norman Dayette just asked me to share that in his tenure, this is the first time that he believes any real effort has been made in Cambria Park besides just doing ivy poles. I do have a proposal from Residential Reforestation to probably do some additional work prior to the end of the fiscal year. So generally, they recommend probably three to four different treatments during the course of the year. I do know that the Arboretum Committee at their meeting on Wednesday will be talking about a more kind of an ongoing comprehensive program, and probably bringing back a recommendation to you all through Jerilee, since she's on to that committee. So I think that concludes my report, unless there's any questions that you all have.
I may have missed it, but did you say that that park didn't include, like, the lesser, I think it's lesser salandine or salandine that's on the floor?
There were a few other non-native shrubs, but I'm not sure exactly what they were.
It grows like, almost like an ivy, but it's really hard to eradicate.
Yeah, if you can just send that to me, I will send a note to Residential Reforestation and ask them specifically if they treated that. I know that Phil Normandy had pointed out the areas to them that he felt needed to be treated.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could send that to me, I'll ask.
Yeah, well, we've been in a couple parks, it's just, once it goes, it's hard to stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Phil indicated that the lesser salandine really isn't responsive to that kind of treatment, and I doubt he recommended it, but I would go ahead and check with him just to be sure.
Sorry, couldn't catch the last part, Jerilee?
I said, go ahead and check with him to be sure, but I think he indicated that he didn't think lesser salandine would be responsive to this kind of treatment, so I doubt he included it, but Barb can certainly check.
Okay.
For those of you who don't know, that's Jerilee, council member Jerilee Bennett, who's out of town, so she's joining us remotely. Okay, the time is seven fifty-two, and we move on to resolution number twenty-two-two-five. Town manager Matthews?
Thank you, the town's current regulations for addressing requests filed under the Maryland Public Information Act was adopted in June twenty fifteen. In the intervening years, there have been a number of changes to state law regarding how Public Information Act requests should be addressed by governmental entities, and there's also been changes in the model processing rules provided by the Attorney General. But with that in mind, I recently contacted the town attorney, asked him to review our current Public Information Act regulations, and to basically update our regulations, certainly to comply with state law, but also to reflect the changes in the model processing rules offered by the Attorney General. So the resolution that is before you tonight would update the town's rules and regulations concerning Public Information Act requests. Changes from the current regulations adopted in twenty fifteen, I'll just highlight some of them. In section one point zero nine of the rules and regulations included as an attachment to the resolution, there is a reference to the required ten-day delay letter. What this, this is a requirement of state law. Essentially, what this means is if a search will take more than ten days, the governmental entity has to send a letter to the requester, basically explaining the reasons for the delay, how long we anticipate it will take to complete the records request, and any anticipated cost with, about doing so. Also, House Bill one eighty-three, which was adopted by the twenty-twenty-one regular session, took effect July first of twenty twenty-two, what House Bill one eighty-three did was to expand the authority of the Public Information Act compliance board, and it also made other edits to the act, one of the specific requirements that you may see as a difference from the twenty-fifteen regs is governmental entities are now required to adopt a policy concerning what records will be proactively disclosed, and what this means is they're available in some other format, and there is no wait for them. Working with Ron Boldt, our town attorney, we basically took a shot at what we thought should be records that were proactively disclosed by the town. Those are listed in section one oh, one point zero five of the proposed rules and regulations, and those proactively disclosed records include, but are not limited to any recent council meeting agendas and minutes, adopted minutes, that is, the most recent adopted budget, the most recent annual financial audit, and the current town charter and town code.
Question for you on that, since we're there, recent town newsletters, we don't really have a newsletter per se, is that something that we should keep, I'm concerned that people might think that the bugle is part of our purvey when it is not?
That's actually a really good point, Phil. Since we don't actually control that, I mean, we control basically publishing what we receive.
Do you have these of the bugle go in the archives?
They are maintained in the archives, we do actually post those on the town website. So I, I think certainly we proactively disclose what we've been given, but Phil, you raise a good point, which is it's not something that is town-published. And so I don't think there would certainly be anything inappropriate of removing that item if you're more comfortable with doing so.
I would think so, unless we wanna put a note that said not including the bugle or something to that effect, or not including Citizens Association publication, I'm just concerned that somebody could come up and say, well, why don't you have it, and under PIA, you're responsible.
Yeah. I mean, the one thing with the Public Information Act is you're only required to provide what you have, so you're not required to create records that you don't have in your possession.
Sure.
But I think your, your point, Phil, is a good one, typically newsletters are actually produced by the governmental entity. That's the subject of the request, so I think you could handle this either way, I think if you're more comfortable, there's certainly nothing wrong with just striking that item from the rules and regulations.
Where would items sent out on the, I never know the names of the forums, but, but the official notices coming from the town office? Would that fit under one of these categories?
They could, I think I think a lot of times you don't include those because it depends how the records request is received and how broad it is, so the less specific someone is making their request, there is some search involved. Your emails are all maintained as official records of the town. But it's not something that we're going to proactively disclose because it's not readily available on the website, someone would actually have to file a PIA request for that type of information.
So, yeah, we propose we strike it based on the fact that it's not an official town record, or at least we don't have such publication?
Yeah, I mean, you're correct, Phil, it does say recent town newsletters, and town is shorthand for the town of Garrett Park.
That's what they figured out.
Is everyone in?
I would agree with that.
Okay, everyone else?
Yeah.
Okay. Jerilee, did you have any comment on that? Wanna make sure I don't forget about you.
Thank you, yeah, I'm fine with that change.
The only other, I guess, series of changes that I wanted to, a couple other ones I wanted to highlight is the proposed rules and regulations include provisions that were recently added to the Attorney General's model rules regarding the MPIA embudsman, this is a fairly recent development in Maryland law, so the Office of the Public Access Embudsman was created in two thousand sixteen, it's an independent agency headed by the Public Access Embudsman, who was charged under Maryland law to make reasonable attempts to help applicants or requesters and records custodians or agencies resolve disputes arising from requests made under the Maryland Public Information Act. The embudsman is actually independent from the Office of the Attorney General, but they are appointed to a four-year term by the Attorney General of Maryland and receives resources and staff support, so once again, this is part of the model rule, so it's essentially disclosing to anyone that if they get into a dispute with the town about a records request, there is kind of a mediator, if you will, so the rules and regulations specifically reference that office as a possible resource. And then lastly, our current regulations for Public Information Act requests sets an hourly rate for staff time of thirty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents, typically the rates that are used by governmental entities are also inclusive of any benefit cost associated with that employee. Obviously, there is a range of salaries among town staff. So the regulations that are before you have been modified to reference the current hourly rate for the staff member that's actually working on the information request. I did wanna note, just in case, this, you may have noticed, as I know, in just kind of reading things through me, Elizabeth asked about this, but you may have noticed in the proposed rules and regulations, as well as the current ones, that there's two hours of research time that is provided free of charge. That's not a town policy, that is a requirement of state law and has been for a number of years.
The origin of this, of this resolution, did something come up that The origin of this, of this resolution, did something come up that, that prompted this, aside from changes in the laws? And you had just been consulting with the attorney and this is just the timing, or was there a particular instance that prompted this?
I have just been kind of trying to systematically go through some of the town's policies and procedures because many of them have not been looked at in some time. So I had actually contacted the town attorney some time ago, basically saying, I think there's been some changes in the law and I'm not sure our regulations reflect those. Would you mind looking through everything? So that was a conversation that started with Ron Bold several months ago, and then he had proactively informed his clients of reminding all of us of that certain of the state laws went into effect earlier this year, and we probably all needed to update them.
Now, we had this, like, where is this? It doesn't look like it's in the ordinance, is it? And we have other rules.
Yeah, I tried to go back through to make sure that there was nothing you needed to rescind. As best as I can tell, it was, it seemed to have been adopted in twenty fifteen, but not by resolution. The policy is just on the town website under Public Information Act request.
Now, or it has?
It is. It's, it's currently out there.
But, but it hasn't been there since five, six, seven years ago. Okay.
Yeah, because I remember working on it. We had to do it because at the time this was coming up and we needed to do something to comply with state law, so we had to put together what happened in twenty fifteen.
So are we remedying this? Is this going in? This is, this is no longer just going to be kind of a policy. This is, we're adopting this as a resolution.
Normally.
Yeah.
And if, if this is adopted this evening, then obviously we'll update the website accordingly.
Are there any, any other questions about this resolution?
Chris, are we going to be signing a future council and town government up to have to redo this another several years down the road, or is, or is there a way we can make it where it's kind of perpetually keeping pace with whatever the state laws are changing? I think a lot of other rules we have, we adopt either the state or the county unless we purposely opt out or have something over top of it.
What I have seen during, I've been working in Maryland since two thousand and four, and I would say that almost every legislative session, there's something to do with the Maryland Public Information Act. So I don't know that there's anything that you can do to just automatically opt in, because sometimes there, there are some items that are discretion, a matter of discretion, such as what records we proactively disclose. You know, so the state isn't going to dictate necessarily every single element. I, I think, Stephen, I think what I can do is certainly just monitor things through the Maryland Municipal League. They do a good job of informing us of what's the bills that are going through the legislature. And certainly Ron Bold, as the town attorney, not only for Garrett Park, but for a number of other municipalities, tries to keep an eye on things like this as well. And, and flag it for us in case any of our policies need to be updated.
But this doesn't include anything about contracts either, I guess. Sometimes in the past, there have been residents that have had questions about what was spent on something. It looks like that can be asked here.
Yeah, that, that can certainly be, you know, any on a financial records or, I mean, unless the records are closed under state law, which expenditures would not be, anyone can just make a simple request.
I'm sorry, expenditures or not, or, or they are, they are part of the?
If someone generally, like I say, a part of the Public Information Act, you're not required to produce records that don't exist, but generally, if someone asks a question about what did you spend on whatever, that's typically considered a record in my experience. And if nothing else, it's just good policy from being, for being transparent.
Okay.
There's a list of stuff out there that will, they, on, on the PIA laws, it will tell you exactly what is you can't put out there. But I mean, there are typically things that would you know, they would harm the town, or they would harm an individual personnel records, contracts on their negotiation, open litigation.
Right, I think, yeah, Phil was like a hundred percent correct. Anything that's a personnel record is closed, communications with legal counsel. In other words, typically you have email exchanges with Ron Bold, you know, those are typically considered, you know, initially viewed as being privileged because they're advice from legal counsel. Those are the major areas of records that are closed. Draft documents are typically not disclosable because they're just that draft. Work product is not generally considered disclosable. But each Public Information Act is reviewed, you know, on an individual basis to determine, and certainly state law gives more weight to disclosing records than what can be withheld, as it should.
And just as a review, a FOIA request is, has a format particular that is followed, or is it just a general, hey, can I have this in that? Just for review.
Yeah, typically the request comes in and if they're clear enough, then we just go ahead and respond. I wouldn't say, I haven't gotten that many of them in Garrett Park, but in other cities, sometimes you get one that's fairly vague, and then you might have an iterative process with the requestor to try to clarify that, if nothing else, certainly for the person's time. Because the broader the request, you can actually burn three, two hours of looking through records. Yeah, for sure, particularly if they, if it's a request for emails that's fairly broad, because then you usually have to have someone go through them and look at each individual email to see if it's disclosable or not.
You can see, it's under one oh six and one oh seven about necessity for a written request, right on the page two of this document. But I know that in the past, having worked on this in the past, that generally speaking, a good verbal request would do the trick. It was only if you came in with an armful of documents you wanted, or it was particularly complex, or you needed something specifically narrow that we've that it would be.
Yeah, I, I think that's a hundred percent correct. If someone just says, hey, I'd like to see the minutes from whatever meeting, or can you point me to the agenda item for whatever. You know, I typically just respond to those if it's a verbal request, but I think these days we tend to get more of those type of requests via email anyway. But they're almost in writing just by the nature of the fact that someone has emailed them to you.
Nice.
So that could count. It doesn't necessarily have to be a formal letter.
Right. Some cities have forms that have to be filled out. I, I, as I tend to lean towards not making it any more complicated than we have to be.
Any other questions about this resolution? Are we ready to call for a motion?
I move that we adopt the resolution, rules and regulations concerning Public Information Act request.
I second. Yeah, if I may, Phil, could you clarify your motion just to say that we're adopting them with striking the recent town newsletters?
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, the, yes, and the, that we strike the we strike under one oh five A three recent town newsletters be removed from the document.
Uh, Councilmember Max, you still want to second that?
Second.
I second.
All those in favor of adopting this resolution?
I.
Okay. No opposed. That is adopted. The time is eight oh eight. We have no unfinished business.
I'd like to just, I mentioned this to Phil, but I think we should kind of jump back on this, these cameras that we're trying to put near the train stations. I don't know what the status is with the train or what we need to do, but we've talked about it a lot, but nobody, I don't think we've gotten anywhere with it. So I just like to try to bring that back to be worked on.
I don't know about that, David, it's true, because I think, didn't you run into a roadblock park, because like the, on our property is I was wondering, we could say, could we put one on like on our side, like on the parking lot side, like that train station, at least you might see people going in and out, you might see there were windows broken at Penn Place before, you'd be able to see maybe those two directions at least.
Yeah, we, we did. I think you all hit the nail on the head in terms of the train station. We don't own the property. It can be difficult from some distance away to get a really clear shot. We did get a proposal that I can share with you to put cameras both inside Penn Place. We, that was a recommendation from having someone walk through from MCPD. She also walked the property with us in terms of where we should probably place exterior cameras. So I think part of that is if you'd like, we can put that on the, your December meeting agenda, just so you have time to look at it where the locations are and what the cost would be for doing that.
Thanks. We'll have to figure out how to, how it gets monitored too, right? Because we'd have to record it.
Right, we're trying to work through, yeah, probably would record to the cloud. We had some conversations internally and with the vendor. This was a vendor that Montgomery County has under contract, so we didn't have to independently get it. We probably wouldn't need to keep the footage for that long, because I think we're going to know fairly quickly if something happened.
Right.
So mainly it was to try to have, you know, cameras in the right locations and with enough clarity that we could turn the footage over to MCPD to hopefully pursue you know, perpetrator, but I will send that proposal out to you on tomorrow, and then Joanna, if you're okay with it, we'll put it on the December agenda.
Yeah, and then so in terms of, of circling back with with Mark and all the other myriad
Right.
agencies that are in charge of the train station.
Yeah, I had spoken to, they had a new special operations commander for the Maryland Transit Police. When we were kind of at the height of the vandalism, thankfully we haven't had any recently, but I realize that can change. I think it's probably more likely that everything that could be easily vandalized unfortunately has been. He was going to look at possibly doing some trail cameras, but they are having problems up and down the mark lines as is Metro. So I had followed up with him a couple of times to see if they've done anything. I suspect that since we have not had any recent vandalism, they might have been more inclined to put their cameras for people who are still having active problems. But I can certainly circle back around with them.
Yeah.
They, they were initially somewhat responsive and then not quite as responsive, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, time is eight twelve and we're moving on to new business and Councilmember Max, you have a request about the Yendel property?
Yes.
And we have this information included in our.
Yeah, there's a design, Tom Rucke designed a sign, we're going to change the name to Yendel Grove.
Well, actually, you know, this is, I mean, this is a council decision.
Well, if we do the sign, the sign will change the word.
Gotcha.
Whatever the council approves. And the cost is three hundred and thirty dollars. I guess the question is in the last committee meeting, there was some concern that if we post a demo permit on the site, they thought that putting the sign up at that time would be appropriate, so it would answer people's questions as to what are we doing when they see a demo permit
Okay.
posted. So that would be what the committee would like to do, is get the sign approved and pay Tom Rucke for it, three hundred and thirty dollars, and he'll paint it and put it up whenever we tell him to.
So this would be this would be a temporary sign. This would only be I, I wonder if it could be designed in a way that it says the name, like, instead of having future site, or maybe it has the sign Yendel Park, Yendel Grove, a space reflection meditation, or whatever the verbiage, and then a sticker over the top that we could peel off, because we're spending three hundred dollars, maybe.
Coming soon.
Or, but, but something where we, we could actually use this sign for longer than a few months.
Good point.
Maybe just a little sign on top of the post of the permanent sign, you can just take off the other sign.
Right, so rather than thinking of this as a, as solely a coming soon kind of a thing.
Right.
What do you think about the timing of waiting until there's a demolition permit, which just to remind you, it's, it's not demolition is probably not going to happen until March or April, Barb?
Yeah, my hope is to, Lisa was asking me about this earlier today. My hope is to have a draft of the RFP done for demolishing the house and send that to the town engineer by the end of November. It will require some legal review thereafter, but in theory, maybe it gets bid out by the end of the calendar year. My goal was to basically have the house taken down, you know, probably in the March or April timeframe, hopefully. And then we could do some site work. So yeah, but I also just want to remind everybody, we've applied for a grant from community parks and playground. We'll know about that in May, but at this point, what, what we have funded is basically the studies we've already done, clearing out the house, getting the house torn down and doing some site work, but nothing for design. So I had to give a rough timeframe to the state as part of the various grant applications. So I think this could be a several year process, just to try to set expectations.
And refresh my memory, but the, the stuff that, the things that we have allocated, that we funded, the demolition, the site work, you know, those things, that's all we're obligated to do under the deed, right? Under the agreement with Letitia Yendel?
You know, I, I think it
I'm not saying that we're not going to do something beyond that.
I, what I was going to say, and the reason I'm hesitating is the deed doesn't get very specific in terms of what we have to do. It's more about how the property can be used, which is basically as either an active or passive park or a wildlife habitat. My, I suspected that the Yendel, Mrs. Yendel, in donating the property, probably expected a little bit more than just the house coming down and the site being cleared. But there, there's nothing in the deed that probably obligates you all to do more than that. But I think that certainly was likely the expectation when she donated the property to the town.
I think the next part, an open space committee meeting, we're going to talk about some ideas for uses, passive uses design, because we can't really hire somebody to do a scope of work in a design until we have a better clarification as to what and how we want to use it. So I think that's something that Parks, an open space committee is going to discuss in their meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so I don't the process for that, I mean, that's a decision in terms of the scope of what, that's a council thing. Am I, I mean, I think that's, I think the direction.
Once we talk about it in the committee, we would then bring it to the council and say, this is what we're talking about. And then the council could approve it or change it or do whatever they want. That would be the first place to get some input. Would be Parks and Open Space, how they want to use that. It's not an obligation.
No, no, I understand. I'm, I'm with several things that are coming up among committees recently, it's sort of raising the question in my mind. And Jack has also expressed an interest in discussing this of, 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 do ideas generate? Like, in what way do the ideas generate? And, and, and just do, does the activity of the, of a committee originate with the council, as in, here's the broad picture of what we'd like to do at Yendel. Now, the specifics and sort of gathering public information then would happen at the committee level and then come back, or does it originate at the committee level and then come to the council? My concern is that if, that when things sometimes when things originate at the committee level and then come to the council, the council is not at all inclined to go in that direction, then that's a lot of time and, and, and effort by the volunteers on our committees. So I, I'm
Well, I guess the question has been, what is the committee there for? I mean,
Right.
Why are, why is the committee meeting to discuss what, like for this property? They're volunteering to express their ideas and thoughts about it, and then we would bring that to the council. I mean, just to say to the council, what do you want to do with the property without having any feedback from the community about it? It just seems like it's kind of a misstep.
This is, this is, this is where it's kind of a sticky thing, where I'm just kind of trying to figure out.
In this particular
Well, hold on, council please.
Sure.
In this particular case, we're somewhat hemmed in by what the deed restrictions are, so unlike, I don't know, Cambria Park, the Dog Park, whatever you want to call it, unlike that one, which I think is wide open and that could be a, as Joanna said, a broad brush stroke statement, maybe from the council to the committee, and then the committee comes back up with ideas. This one, I believe it's kind of already we have to do, there's, we have to do what we have to do, so we're left with the committee basically coming up with ideas to satisfy the deed restrictions.
Except that I think that we are satisfying the deed restrictions by tearing it down and making it safe. I mean, like, so there aren't actual requirements, except what it can't be, which is, you know, like a
Well, it has to be.
crazy theme park.
A, a park active or inactive, so I guess yeah, I guess you could say what defines a park active or inactive. And that's where yeah, so you could use that.
I, I think it's, it's okay. Thank you. I think what the mayor is saying is more along the lines of it, where does not the council comes to, well, excuse me, the committee comes to the council and proposes. It's not proposed as a done deal, and I think that's where the misclarification is. I think sometimes uh some committees come and say, this is what we're going to do, as if that was, you know, what the result was because they had put it together and not because it was um discussed or debated or uh even reviewed by the council itself. Am I correct?
Uh, yeah, I I I think maybe it would be helpful, maybe at the at the December meeting to come to the council with some broad strokes of this is what we'd like, this is the direction broadly that we'd like to go, so that we can make sure that it's in the broad direction. That is sort of on the path for what the council wants to do.
When I was um, is this okay to speak, please? Um, when working on the task force for the ARPA funds, that was actually one of my first questions, what is, what is the result that is expected and how how should it be presented? Is it presented as just recommendations? Um, you know, just thoughts, uh feedback from the town et- et cetera? Um, and and how do we approach that? And I'm seeing that other councils take it, uh other, excuse me, committees take it in a different manner. So I think having something a little bit more structured and standardized, I even remember asking uh Barbara, uh our town manager, you know, tell me what the definition of committee is and what their, what their job is. Um, because I don't think it's absolute, it's not set anywhere that I can find.
I would second that pretty strongly too, is like, that was similar to my experience today. Before I joined the council, I was on the Historic Preservation Committee for six or seven years and I am, I didn't, I wasn't even aware of this idea of a council liaison, which is not to my knowledge, not mentioned anywhere in the ordinance or charter, it's just like a, it's a term that's just kind of dropped out of somewhere, like, I think that was partly because the council person, I think that was assigned to that committee, just didn't never did anything, so the former chair that really kind of put together the uh the agenda for that, and we did a lot of good work, but then I think we always had that kind of thought that we're doing any of the things that the council asked, and there were some specific asks, um, and then we purposely had meetings and discussed through what those might be, like the the curving sidewalks came from that and um so on so forth, but then also there are other things where we thought like if um it was important to kind of like bubble up ideas and then, you know, get them to, I think we ended up sending them to the mayor at the time, instead of the council member who was apparently assigned to us, but um, I think it would be great to get those rules, so it's kind of clear what's expected, it should be in my eyes, it should be something where it's a useful resource to have committees that, you know, look into things and brainstorm, come up with ideas that can kind of expand what the council and the mayor are considering not to have the misconception that the committee is being asked to
Right.
Decide wherever they want it, and especially spending money, because that's happened a little bit recently too, where money was just spent without um even coming through council, so.
This is actually, this is something I'm, I'm I'm definitely working on right now is um is is trying to trying to establish what a framework is for these kind of projects. Um, and and how we can provide guidance to the committees, how we can share um what resources are available to them from the, from the office, from us, um what kind of timeline we expect, so that we can try to give some accountability to us and accountability to everybody. Um, and and so that's, that's, that's one of the things that I would love to discuss, that I would like to discuss during work session in a couple of weeks, is um is two-pronged, like partially let's make sure that we're addressing all the, all the sorts of issues, sort of from a template perspective, but also then um, there are a couple of projects that are on the horizon that we can lay out some parameters of what we'd actually like for you know, like to put into the marching orders of the framework for specific projects. Um, so, so that's sort of, we we broaden this question, the question was about specifically Yendel and um and the question, there are two parts, one is the name and about whether
Yeah.
How we feel about the name of.
Proposed name.
What do y'all think of the name Yendel Grove?
Is there a reason for the change?
Instead of Yendel Park?
Yeah.
There was some discussion in our committee meeting and they thought Grove was a little more passive, whimsical, descriptive of this, of what they're, what the vision is for the space.
Jack, you're gonna come to the, come to the mic?
I can't be, um, Jack Mandell on Rockabye Avenue, I I can't be exact, but we went through a lot of iterations of names. Wood, Woodland, Glen, Grove, and we had people looking up definitions.
Right.
And just thinking about the general idea of the use, what we we, we, our job, we believe, my, I I believe our job is to inform the council of recommendations, true recommendations. We're very fortunate, we have two council members attending most of our meetings, so the the there's nothing being done, we're we're not making decisions, we're really making recommendations. So Yandell Grove came about after some spirited debate. You know, and you know, we're okay one way or the other, we just think it fits with the vision that we think the town has has given us feedback on, that we've, we've talked to the town about it um through Joanna, through Bill, through Lisa, through others, through the community, and we've gotten some, you know, reasonable feedback. If, you know, the town wants to call it Yendel Woodland, Yendel Park, Yendel Glen, Yandell, you know, that's fine with us.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yandell, y'all. Could be some benefit, I think we talked about this before too, like that um if it shows up on a map, it's like a park, it may give the misconception to um
Hmm.
Um, people out of town thinking it's like a big playground or something else, and it's not really meant to be that.
People want parks, it's not parks and grass.
Yeah.
Grassy area.
Even over a hundred years ago, it was a place where you parked your carriages, it was usually what is called a park, um that's like cemeteries had them and the whole area down on the, I guess the west side of Kinnaworth, it was all labeled park on the um on the original plan, it was kind of the idea. Pick carriages around and park them, you get it, so.
So um what do you all think of the of the name Yendel Grove?
I have no opposition.
I like it, I mean, but it was.
Hey, Jeri, what do you think? Yendel Grove?
I think it's fine. I mean, at first I was a little concerned that that sort of implies something specific about trees, but I think it's kind of an innocuous name and it's it, I understand why the committee wants to propose that name. I think it's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh Barb, do we need to is this something that needs a vote or is just, we're saying thumbs up, this works?
Um, I think you can just do it by adopt by consent or endorse the committee's recommendation, um. You know, I did check with the, obviously we have two state applications and and did confirm with them, since I knew uh Jack and his committee were gonna be talking about it. There's no issue from the state's perspective about
Changing.
Going to something else, I just need to notify them if we change the name of the project.
Okay. Well, I mean, if there's no opposition, then let's, let's endorse that, that recommendation of Yendel Grove.
Good.
As for the sign, what's the timeline for how long this would take to create?
Uh, my impression is, uh you know, I had some email exchanges with Tom Ruckay, he's been out of town, but I don't think it's gonna take him that long.
Okay.
Um, I did, yeah, I did tell him that you all would be discussing it tonight and not to initiate work, um.
Okay.
Until I get from the okay.
Um, I, I would rather that we not put something that we not re, I, I want a sign that says future site of sort of as delayed as possible. I mean, the longer it sits there, the more people are like, when is something gonna happen? And sort of almost better to keep it blank, you know, better to keep it with nothing, I think, rather than put something um for now.
How about a, a proper sign with um, you know, a sign on top of it, coming soon or in progress or what have you, um therefore also saving three hundred and thirty dollars for a sign that's going to be disposed of at the end.
It might be better to get a thousand dollar sign and
Right.
And do that later in the spring, it's, it's not like a good idea to me, at least like to put it up with the demolition, so you, you answer the question that right way, and you don't get too many premature questions now.
Right.
Um, it sounds like that's in plans for the spring, but I, I guess once the house is done and cleared, it could be habitable for as a park, right?
The only thing I worry about, about putting a big sign kind of in the entrance is if they're doing work and clearing it and getting dumpsters to get their house out of there and take some trees down.
Mm-hmm.
I don't wanna, you know, have the, this sign, a permanent big sign be an impediment to the access to the site. Which is why I just thought a post on a small sign made sense for this purpose.
They can just wait until the demolition is done.
Well, but the idea was to put it up when the permit was posted, so that people knew what was going on on the site.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the outline.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, I think what what Tom has designed, I think is lovely, is sort of a a temporary kind of coming soon sign. I think as I think about the signs we have up at other parks, I don't think this is probably consistent with the type of signage we have at other of our parks, um in terms of the permanent sign.
Right.
Correct, yeah, I think they're generally obviously larger, they're not solely on posts, they're
And they're big wooden pieces.
Right, big wooden pieces. Um, but I think, Jack can correct me if I'm wrong, I think part of what the committee was trying to do was to sort of generate some excitement that something's coming.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, um, thank you for asking, I definitely to generate, to kind of respond to that, but also uh the the we have five members of our committee and four of them have said that they've all been approached multiple times. What's going on, what's going on? You know, I live on one side and Navid lives on the other side. And we've been approached, I mean, a a week doesn't go by that someone doesn't ask us about what the status of that property is. Um, we've had people suggest, why did you do something? It really looks terrible, that that that. And so I think what we are trying to do is, we've been in business for four or five months. And we were just trying to say, we are moving forward, things are happening. So we will put this stake in the ground now, recognizing that it may take four or five more months before anything happens.
Not exactly now, right, but when the building permit.
When the building.
When the demo permit is.
The demo, thank you.
But but would you, was that, did you actually mean you'd prefer that we put a little something there now?
No, I'm sorry, to Lisa's point, I mean, to to put a sign up not necessarily to wait till things are coming down, but as as the process is in play and moving forward to put something up, because again, we're being asked all the time.
Right.
Especially, you know, late winter, early spring, people are gonna start looking around, so we just thought it was a reasonable idea. Again, if the council thinks that they don't wanna do it now, we're okay, as long as, we're we're just happy you're discussing it.
I mean, we could just do, you know, the the yard sign with two stakes and just, you know, fifty dollar sign and put it there and say, you know, uh approximate timeline, I mean, if we want to communicate that something's happening on the site, we could go that route, um.
My my guess is that um part of, I guess, the wording I see on the signage that the committee has proposed is it's also sort of not only saying something's going to happen, but giving people a sense
Mm-hmm.
Of what will be on the property, if the mayor and town council agree that it's intended to be sort of a meditative, quiet contemplative space as opposed to a, an active playground.
Right.
Um.
That would vary around.
Um, I just want to commend you that actually it sounds like what a committee is for, in my opinion, is working, because they're going to the right people to ask what is going on. Um, just as a, an aside in relation to the other topic related, um so thank you for answering this question, I'm sure we should just hand out pamphlets or something, um but I just wanna say I appreciate that.
Jack's point though about like people asking, it made me think, I wonder if it shouldn't have, if it's a temporary sign, if it shouldn't have more than that, maybe like something explains really briefly, answers those questions, like phase one is, you know, twenty twenty-three um to remove the house and fill it in and remove hazmat or whatever the um, the thing is, isn't that maybe like a phase two is to clear all the woodlands and, you know, something really short, just bullet points.
I think we, I think somebody on the committee agreed to write up something for the bugle about it at some point. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was where we were gonna.
Nothing is quite as.
Flush it out a little bit for people.
Nothing is quite as informative as people who are walking.
Yeah.
I mean, I know three hundred and thirty dollars isn't a lot of money, but, I mean, I like this idea of 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 sort of laying out the steps in a somewhat let, I don't know, what, of laying out the steps and just saying, this is the, this is the status, or this is.
In the bugle or on a sign?
On the site, I mean.
You know, one thing you can do is you can put a QR code on the sign, uh that will then take someone to a a spot on our website that could be more.
Right. And if that's the case, it can just, it can be a laminated sheet of paper.
I would leave it open, so you could update it if it goes to the town website or something, and you gotta update something that correct it to
We could also.
Four instead of Q three and.
It's true.
We could also post it as a post office, technically, isn't that where it's supposed to go?
Yeah. Um. Jack, could you go to the microphone, just in case anyone's watching, I wanna make sure they can hear you?
Point about iterative steps. Um, we didn't feel like it was our position, you know, we have some basic ideas about that, but again, we were not prepared, as as Lisa mentioned a few minutes ago. We know that down the road, we need to hire a landscape architect, but we need to inform the landscape architect what our vision is or what the town's vision is, and what do we say, we, we don't mean we mean representing the town, okay? Whether it's we inform the town or the town informs us. But then to inform the landscape architect of that vision, you know, what what do we want that space to look like?
Mm-hmm.
What do we want people, do we want people to stay there? Do we want people to come and go quickly? Do we want people to return? Do we want, you know, do we want a play space for adults? You know, do we want sitting areas, you know, all that, and we're not, we're not there yet.
I don't, I'm not, I don't think I'm interested in doing uh this, you know, this, this, a sign like this at this point, certainly not at this point.
Okay.
Um, something uh, a paper sign or, you know, a yard sign with a QR code where we can put updates. It's sort of more informative, but less expensive.
Gonna write it.
You know, well, I mean, I can certainly work with Suzie, but I would say probably in terms of timing and steps, I probably know more than most people do about it, just because of the grant applications. Jack, if you're okay with this, maybe I could work with either you or Suzie Welker, um just in terms of kind of coming up with the format and the information and um, be happy to do that.
And for those of us less inclined to QR code things, um, can we just put also at the bottom of the full disc, you know, full list at the post office, because
Hmm.
We all go there anyway.
Right, yeah.
So that way you have in writing as well as.
Or go knock at the house next door.
Yeah.
Point.
Yeah, but just have a big arrow.
Right, right, right. Um. Okay.
I think we're.
So we think we know what we're.
So we're good with Yendel Grove, um, we'll go ahead and notify the state that as they kind of consider our application to change the name from Yendel Park to Yendel Grove.
Beautiful.
And Jack, I'll be in touch about the other part of it.
And we'll tell Tom we don't want to sign, thank you so much for the design, but we're gonna take a pass, okay?
Um. Let's see, time is eight thirty-nine and uh Jerilee, you wanted to uh pass along a request from Garrett Park Nursery School?
Yeah, thank you, um Barb um provided uh a one-pager describing the request as well, so um that's available. Uh, essentially, the lease onto the nursery school requested um permission to put a fence in around the south side playground that's adjacent to the, to the building. Um. There is currently a fence that goes uh across the front of the building, and then there is also a playground fence uh on the playground on the north side. And before the lease was established, the playground fence around the north playground already existed and um when the nursery school did the renovations uh in the twenty-eleven timeframe, they put in the fence that goes across the front. I believe the town put in the fencing along the side of the building that protects the air conditioning units. At this time, the uh nursery school, as the um lessee, is making two requests, one, they want permission to put in a fence. And secondly, they wanted to ask the town if the town were willing to pay for the additional fence to be installed on around that northern side playground adjacent to the building. So uh I wanted to put that um to you for consideration.
All right, so let's start with the easy one, are we okay with there being? All right, so let's start with the easy one, are we okay with there being a new fence put in to sort of delineate where the, um, nursery school playground is and sort of separate it from a little bit more fully from the elementary school, is that?
Right, it was separated from the elementary school and also passersby, um, the school is finding that they want to use that outdoor space more for the kids and it's a safety measure.
Yeah.
So, I'm still fuzzy, Jerilee, uh, the fence goes around four sides of that already, right?
No, no, it's the other side of the building.
No, there's no fence that goes around the backside of the building, we'll say, well, the, the side or the back. It goes across the front and on the north side, but not on the south side, and also not on the west side.
Yes, not the rain garden, this, we're not talking the rain garden.
And this fence would not fence in the rain garden, it would only fence in the, the play area to the south side of the building, adjacent to the long side of the building.
So several years ago, it was established, we, we put a bunch of, um, logs, sort of creating a, a barrier, and it's got a lot of wood chips and, and I guess now there's a, a tire swing and some other stuff, and it's the space that's closest to, you know, with the kindergarten and, um.
Yeah, I guess I haven't seen it in a long time.
Either, but it's, yeah.
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 So, it's on the, it's on the elementary school side of the building.
Right, and it's.
Right.
Um, so, are you all okay with putting, uh, with allowing there to be a fence? Put in that space, or? Do they think it's a safety thing for the kids?
Yes.
Yeah.
Both to keep the kids in and to keep strangers from entering into the space when the kids are outside.
So separate from, separate from the funding.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Are you just asking about yes or no, not the cost?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, I would support doing that, but it makes it clear. It's separate.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah, I find it too.
Great, so question number two, Jerilee.
I, I just wanna add one thing to the first part, I would recommend that we say yes in terms of placing it, um, but also ask them to submit the design to the town office for review, um, before they install it, just to make sure that it doesn't, um, that there's not anything that is unexpected.
Yeah, that's a good thought.
Yeah, did they have, did Eric have a reliable boundary servant and know where to put it, or do they need to get one?
Um, I don't know that they have that. They should, it should be available, because the town transferred the property fairly recently, so it should be available. But they didn't submit a drawing or anything like that with their request, and I, I think that would be not an unreasonable request.
Jerilee, do you know what kind of fence they wanna put, is it gonna match the fences around the rest of the, of the building?
No, I think that's a good question, I mean, we could request that they do something that's in keeping with the fence that it would be adjacent to, which is the one across the front of the property.
Okay.
Okay, great, so, um, solved half of that, um, so the, the, the other part of this is, uh, does the town have funding available to pay for this fence?
I, so I read the lease, and I noticed that the lease calls for the town and the nursery school to share the cost of playground equipment, I think.
Mm-hmm.
And so it might be appropriate to tell them, we'll pay fifty percent, make it pay fifty percent. In keeping with the terms of the providing equipment terms under the lease, so.
Are we gonna?
Yeah, that's an interesting perspective, because, um, a, a fence was not specifically mentioned in the lease, um, so, but you could, I, I think that's, that's, I hadn't thought of it that way, but you could look at this as, um, part of the playground equipment and you could interpret it that way, I think that's possible.
Um, that would be my proposal to go back to them with. Although I don't know the financial condition of the nursery school.
Um, or the cost of the fence.
Or the cost of the fence.
Uh, are you all open to sharing the cost of this, is this a take it, asking, um, Councilmember Bennett to take this back to the nursery school and ask them to, to investigate the cost of this, and then we, I would not want to declare now that we consider a fence to be part of playground equipment, because then it obligates us to do so. Um, obligates us to spend, to pay for half. How, however, just, um, to take into consideration landlord expenses includes ground maintenance, grounds maintenance, and is that included, just for clarification, also along the same lines?
Um, the grounds is, maintenance, I think, is specifically defined somewhere in terms of like replacing the wood chip and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How do you feel about that, Jerilee?
Um, well, you know, I, I hadn't thought of it the way you just, um, presented it, Lisa, so I'm kind of taking that in a little bit.
Okay.
I, I don't think that that was the intent, I don't think that playground equipment, that, that portion on page nine of the lease, I don't think that was
No.
Intended to be something that would be borne in part by the town.
No, it was meant to be replacement of the existing playground equipment.
Right, slides, swings, things like that.
Yeah, as, as it wore out or key months, yep.
But I guess it's just a way that we can share the cost rather than incurring a hundred percent of the cost.
I don't think that we would, I don't think there's any, I don't think we owe, we would have to pay a hundred percent of the cost.
Okay, that's not there for.
Yeah, I mean, I think the other option is just to ask the, the lessee to, to pay the full run, because it's, you know, for their benefit to have the playground enclosed.
Oh, I see, okay, they're not asking us to pay for it.
They're asking us to be willing to consider.
They are, they're asking if we're willing to pay for it, and we're putting that up to consideration, yeah.
Right, but I, but it's not, the lease does not obligate us to pay for it.
Right, we're not obligated to exclusively.
You're gonna pay fifty percent and we're gonna pay all of it.
Right, we have options.
Or some percentage thereof, yeah.
Right, so we, so we have to, well, first of all, we don't know what it's gonna cost, right?
Well, but, I guess, does the dollar amount matter if this is a philosophical, what's the sense, what's our interest? I mean, does it matter if it's ten dollars or ten thousand dollars? Does the council, are we obligated to do it, do we wanna go beyond what we are obligated to do, do we want to interpret this, this piece, this provision about playground equipment more broadly than was intended? So it kind of doesn't matter what the dollar amount is.
I just realized.
If I, nay, um, yeah, I agree, it does, does this create a precedent that could be applied by other groups in town, and, um, or even just the nursery school, I mean, I. Or even just the nursery. I adore, I spent six years there. Yes. I, it's a huge part of my life, um, but what do they pay, like a dollar a year, or something like that, for fifteen years?
Yes.
So they don't have, at least from the town, I mean, they're getting a pretty great thing.
Yes.
Well, to be fair, they fully paid upfront to renovate the building, all four hundred thousand dollars of that, so that is not an insubstantial amount of funding.
Where's that money come from?
So they, they paid their, all of their lease money in advance by paying for those renovations.
Okay, fair point.
Was it like previous, um, users, like fundraising?
Mm-hmm.
Because I was always curious how it worked too, like, I just recently met somebody who lives out of town, and said that their kids went to the nursery school here, and then they were talking about other friends that we know that are also out of town, so it's like, it's like town taxpayer dollars, but it's, it's a mixture of surrounding communities, that's.
So, so how do we feel about, about taking on this additional responsibility, sort of extra on top of the lease obligations?
Well, Robin's proposal number two says, if not, if we don't wanna pay for it, would the town authorize the nursery school to put fencing around the playground after completion of a fundraising drive, where they raise the money for it?
Right.
We'd let them put it in.
Right. So I think we already said we'd be willing, regardless of who pays for it, or we're willing for there to be a fence. Yeah, not that was the easy part. So, do we want to go above, does it, regardless of the money, of the amount of money, do we wanna go above what the lease requires for us to do? And provide for the, and, and provide half or all of this funding for the fence?
Or none.
If I may, I don't feel comfortable in answering that question at this point without thinking about it, it's not a spur of the moment question, and I would rather. What are the, what are the elements that will help you, what do you need, is this just something you need to think about? I'm considering precedent, like I said, um, just because there isn't something already equal to, um, how do we make sure that everything, uh, is coordinated, coordinated in a way, should we pay alls or, uh, half or what percentage, um, that this is, uh, I guess like, like a gift to the Garrett Park, um, nursery school and not something that is uh, expected or, uh, requests come in left and, you know.
Duplicated by others.
Exactly, no, it's truly.
Right.
Um, yeah, you know, just making sure that, um, we're, um, also protecting the town and its responsibilities and its funding, really. Is there any other information that we would want to get from the nursery school in helping make this decision, or is this just something we all need to sort of ponder?
I, I don't mind pondering it if it's, if it's an emergency or.
Exactly, that's, that's.
I, I don't think it's an emergency, um, so I think we could ask them to share a, a drawing of where the location of the fence would be, um, maybe more information about the design and if they have a cost estimate, just so that we have that information.
Okay.
That would be a good next step, did we ever fix the parking lot at the nursery school?
Uh, that was something that Barb mentioned in her update today, um, with funding, that's, that's not yet happened, but it's.
Yeah, the survey work has been completed, um, Jason Azar is reviewing that, I think Phil in particular had some issues about stormwater. So he's in the process of reviewing the stormwater results, trying to get a feel for where the water's flowing. Um, so that's as far as we've gotten on that.
Okay. Um, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to ask for a drawing of their proposal, um, especially if that's something that we're gonna ask for, whether, regardless of who pays for it. I think that's, that'd be a.
And a cost would be good too.
Yeah. Got that, Jerilee?
At least.
Okay, yeah, I think that sounds good.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, the time is eight fifty-two, ARPA funding, um, so the purpose of this item is just wanting to philosophically, and I don't want this to be a really long discussion, um, but I don't wanna cut it off either, uh, philosophically, are we what does the ARPA funding mean for the town, are we taking it as an infusion into our budget, that the, uh, as the the, the, the final rule for use of the, of the funding from treasury was basically it's, it's, uh, can be used for government services, which is really broad, meaning we can spend it however we see fit. Um, are, are there other guidelines that you all want to put on those, do you want the ARPA funds to mean something, is there anything anything that should slow us down from spending, because there are a few items that are coming up that we need to fund, we need to pay for, and we could just start drawing down from our, from our, 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 our allocation. So is there, is there anything sort of philosophically that?
Personally, generally speaking, I would like to see earmarked for costs associated with the renovation of this building.
I would second that.
What about the fact that this is a timeline, uh, uh, it has to be allocated before thirteen, or by thirteen? December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So twenty-five months from now, um, okay, I'm sorry, go, I, I.
No, I understand where you're coming from, it's basically, do, do we think we get there, but on the other hand, as been discussed at this forum previously, we've been dragging our feet on this whole deal, and so if we get ourselves moving, we now have time definite to get something moving on it, and chances are it's gonna over, the renovations will probably end up with, or gonna overrun the amount of funds that we have available for us, so I would still try and preserve that bucket, that doesn't mean that we can in the future decide to change our minds and do something else, but um, I would still, it would be my preference that we try and hold those funds available for purposes of the renovation of this building, and, and starting even with the, the, uh, RFP we just talked about.
Okay.
The design and the renovation.
Yes, yes.
Donna, how do you feel about that?
Um, thank you. Um, so the, as I'd mentioned earlier with the task force, there was a number of suggestions, recommendations, thoughts, et cetera, ranging from, uh, electric parking to a renovation of the dog park and, um, in addition, stormwater management, which is what it was originally for, right? So during that process, um, our uh, job changed from, here's the parameters you have to work under, to here's no parameters that you have to, um, come to a recommendation of. Um, there has been a number of questions, uh, both, um, from council, from, uh, townspeople about making sure that the money is spent as fast as possible. Um, I understand their, uh, their hurry and their concern, they don't need to be concerned because it's, it's already in our banks, we just need to spend it in the next twenty-five months. Um, having said that, uh, uh, I know that there are a number of, we all know that there are a number of projects that are still, they are pending, that are going to need to start in some way or form, um, and because now that is, there's no, uh, limitations, if you will, on that ARPA funds, I would personally recommend that we use it to, for whatever projects are upcoming first. Um, that doesn't mean that we're not going to renovate this hall if that's not the first thing, um, on our list, but, uh, because there's no limitations, I think we need to spend it sooner rather than later, that way we can also, um, modify our budgets come future years on making sure that the renovations are, or the, you know, dog park renovations or what have you, um, are made in future budgets, it's not, it doesn't preclude them from happening, is my point.
I kind of, I kind of like what Donna was saying, I have a similar perspective on it, I think, um, the way I've always seen it is like we have a pretty big chunk that kind of, I've heard it, I think described as like spread like peanut butter across a little buckets, we have all of our budget, we really have over a million dollars sitting in capital budget, so I figure, I kind of see this, you know, instead of it being a little bit over a million, we really have a little bit over two million, so I think the thing that's most important to me, I think that would be the best use of that funds is not any, you know, maybe it's this place, maybe it's something else, but to do something that the, the funds came out of the pandemic and have something that's really noticeable, that gonna say that people, like future generations will be able to say five, ten years from now, like, that we went through this really difficult time, it's kind of like the Spanish lube, we went through COVID nineteen, and that, you know, at least there was this you know, thing that we, you know, the town gained out of it, so I feel like it should be a different way of saying it, I think it should be a substantial, memorable public access project, there may not be this one versus using it to kind of like fix a tire and paint the
Right.
You know, or the town office, or you know, any of those kind of things, like just something that's big and memorable that you could tell us.
Something that benefits the town in and of itself, in a, in a substantial way, um, it also would be easier to account for and, and monitor in that.
Yeah, big picture project.
Right. Jerilee, what do you think?
I generally agree with what I've heard, um, everyone else say about, um, directing it towards town hall, but remaining flexible if we're not able to meet that timeline. I kind of like the idea, I think it was Phil who expressed it, that, you know, by, by designating it for, um, town hall, that might also motivate all of us to move more expeditiously to get the town hall work done, and I, I like that, um, motivator.
Uh, that doesn't mean I'm pro or con the town hall, I mean, I'm pro renovated the town hall, but I think we need to take into consideration all of the town projects and much of that. Barb, is there anything you'd like to, to contribute to this? Um, cause I mean, from a reporting perspective, you're the one who's gonna be responsible for doing reporting, um, but is there?
I can't remember what term Stephen just used, but I, I would say that the projects, I mean, they certainly have streamlined the reporting requirements, but I certainly wouldn't wanna get into a bunch of, you know, I'm being facetious here, but, you know, five thousand dollars here, ten thousand dollars here, I do think the projects just for ease of reporting, um, should be somewhat substantial. Um, I know, Donna might wanna speak to this, I know that there are certain projects such as the Waverly sidewalk, um, that came up during the task force discussion, so if there are certain projects, for example, that were funded with other money and could easily be accomplished during the timeframe, I'm just using Waverly sidewalk as an example, because it's part of what the recovery funds task force specifically discussed. You know, that might be an opportunity for a large-scale project that you basically choose to use ARPA funds for, and then take the funds that are existing in the budget and reallocate to town hall. And then take the funds that are existing in the budget and reallocate to town hall. Um cause it wouldn't have the same time sensitivity. I'm not trying to slow it down. I'm just saying you don't have the same commitment. That was something that I believe it was Dick Morgan in particular. Um on the task force sort of talked about the money being somewhat fungible now. And to maybe look at projects that we were gonna use existing town funds for. Um currently, I was just looking at the financial report, um we've got about a half a million dollars currently in the capital budget. That's available for for town hall. Um you know, I would certainly suggest, just given your commitment to town hall, the the RFP that we should be issuing. Hopefully sometime soon for the first scope of work. You know, that might be a project this evening that you wanna just go ahead and. Tap and say you wanna use our benefits to do that. Um I think the only other thing I would add is we had a lot of discussions about the town office renovation. I would just remind you that is an unfunded project. Though I'm not sure how you want to. Sorry, whoever I just dropped um. You know, how you want to handle that in terms of funding. Right now I've been doing. Um just having them work hourly. I haven't even moved to, you know, signing any contract for construction development. Um just because the project's not funded.
And we just heard from Black Markets if they don't want a little space.
Correct.
So we were kind of waiting for that.
How do y'all feel about using ARPA funds for the town office renovation? It's it's putting a, it's putting a a cleaner, neater, better face for the town.
I support it because I think it's, well, it's has has a shorter timeframe, I think. Because it's moving for further along, it's unfunded. Uh the town hall has a half a million, we can start using that. Um and if necessary, if we're not, you know, we don't use all of it, which I would be surprised to renovate the town offices. Right, but it's all, it's just something that's needs to be done sooner rather than later and. Again, that way we wouldn't have to spread it out in a couple places.
Okay. Um I I like to use this kind, this this phrase, Steve, of um the big and memorable.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um I I. That is kind of a neat thing of telling a story, of telling a story of of wow, look. Look what we have to show for for this having.
Yeah.
Uh and that's that's a cool concept that I had not really been able to pinpoint, but yeah, I see what you're saying. That's that's really. It's cool, cool way of looking at it. So town office, are you okay or not okay with using ARPA funds for this? Because we we need to build out the budget portion or the the line item. For the ARPA funds, and that's something that that Barb's been talking about doing. I think we're gonna, we're gonna have that in the in the mid-year adjustment.
I I think it depends if you all are comfortable providing, you know, this is obviously the first time you've really had a substantive discussion about this. I mean, if you have, you know, some rough idea of certain projects, then as Joanna's saying, I can at least make an attempt at building out a budget. Uh for the ARPA funds and include that in the mid-year budget adjustment, which of course at that point, you're free to review it and change it. Um but at this point, we just have sort of a a lump of funds, um because we really didn't have any good idea when we were. Preparing the FY twenty twenty-three budget of how you wanted to use the funds.
If I may, piggybacking on what Stephen said about, and I completely agree, I was thinking the same thing, using it for something more memorable instead of spreading it out. Um it's like getting a tax refund and if you spend it on a car, that's your tax refund car as opposed to. You know, fixing refrigerator and the roof and something and something. Um and I think the town offices, in my opinion, are more of a. Modern, I guess, version of Garrett Park. Um they are representative, um and I. I would be hard pressed to ever think that this town hall would ever be forgotten. So I I firmly believe that we'll continue on going with that.
Mm-hmm.
Um but getting the and getting the uh town uh offices renovated. That is just as impressive, frankly, in in my opinion, um when done correctly, which I think we're on that road. That's just wanted to share my opinion there.
You could still stay with the spirit of it.
Right, yeah, exactly.
I don't know how many times it was like twenty probably, you kept asking for years, like can we get more money in the town hall budget?
Yeah.
Others did too, and it was, it was really hard to build it up to the five hundred that it is, but that's not enough to really do this project anyways. So what really makes it um doable now is that million dollar fusion. So even if we're do- doing some things in the short term and backfilling it around. Still, I think the spirit of it is that that now that experience of the pandemic and that funding that came, you know, from it. Justified or not, um that help get it.
So the ARPA funds in fact would be supportive.
But another thing to remember is that in terms of asking for grants or asking for a bond fund. We need to be much further along in this process.
Right.
Um and so if we use the funds early on now with these first designs and we sort of start things moving along. Using ARPA funds um for town hall, that puts us in a better position. So that we can ask for bond.
Magic funds.
Or or any, you know, any of that stuff.
Joanna has, I mean, I'm sorry, Jerely has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Jerely, please.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I agree with what you just said, and I am concerned that if we um. If we use the ARPA funds for something else, we're putting ourselves that much more in the hole to be able to accomplish the town hall project. Which we know is going to use more than just the ARPA funds and what we have allotted to it. So that that is concerning to me. I mean, in effect, what we're doing is setting priorities by deciding what to spend the ARPA funds on. As to what we want to actually get accomplished.
Agreed, and my cons- and my concern is that we end up dragging out further. Because we either don't have the funds or we don't have the impetus or whatever, but. I mean, I could see using some of the funds, but I wanna be very careful that we don't take big chunks out of it um. I think that the I right now, from what I saw, the number that was estimated for the town office redo, I don't think is. Too bad, and to me would be acceptable, but I would say that I would keep the rest of the money available for this building because. This is something we need to do and we just don't wanna put ourselves any further behind.
And we could also come back and sort of uh put a reminder to ourselves, hey, a year from now, have we truly progressed with town hall? That we are going to be in uh on the right path to be able to spend it in the appropriate amount of time. So there's nothing that says that if we set it aside now, that we have to stick with that.
Agreed. The only quick thing I wanted to say was, um I saw the thing that Barb sent out today and we had, but. I was wondering if we could get an estimate to do something to spruce up um the lobby area. And or tenant space three, because that way we could roll it into one big work package to uh go out to bid or do whatever.
Yes, I think when you all um met at the end of August, you did say you wanted to do something for the lobby, and I think um. You know, Kayla having tackled and kind of called the collection of um, I was gonna call them gardening books, but not all of them were, obviously um. I think now we can probably have a nice kind of, you know, seating area with still some some bookshelves. I will ask them if they can sort of rough out. What that might cost. I think in regard to tenant space B, the last direction you gave, which certainly you can change that is. Now I was to reach out to Black Market and see if they wanted the space. If they didn't, um I think you just. At least what I understood you all to say is that you wanted to go ahead and and kind of spruce up tenant space B. Get, you know, get get it painted, basically get new, you know, carpet. Um and at least it's positioned if you choose them to rent it. Is that still, I guess, the direction of the group? Cause I can discuss that with Lumber and Light tomorrow.
I'm still in favor of that.
I still need to go see it with you, I think.
Sure.
I've never been in that room. And are we committed? Are are we bound to lumber and light or?
Um at this point, I just have them working on an hourly basis. I haven't signed any contract for anything to go to the next stage.
But are we obligated to use, I mean, the work that they've done doesn't come, did we pay for that? Does it come with us if we go somewhere else?
I believe it would, but I can double check that.
Is that what you're asking?
Uh yeah, I'm not sure we. Like, yeah, I guess it would be good to ask if if we did wanna consider somebody else that maybe has a little bit more capabilities um. Could that work transfer, work product be transferred?
But I don't know that. I don't know that that I would. It'd be nice to know if we're if we're locked in, you know, like if if we. Right, but I also wouldn't wanna lose all the work that they've done already.
No.
That is perfectly.
Usually when you're the client, part of the design work, you you kind of, like, they own the work product, but you still can use it.
Okay. So I think we got our answer about.
Right.
Town hall, I I mean, not town hall, about our town hall, and I'm glad, I'm glad that we sort of had the had the conversation to say. Philosophically, we want this to mean something.
And it sounds like there's some consensus that this project here is an appropriate one for those costs if we can do it in time.
Right.
Which I think isn't a real concern.
Yeah.
But I my vote would be to spend the money four hundred thousand dollars. For the renovation of up to the office space and then. Use the. Money that we have in the DARPA funds to replenish that. So that we end up with the money that we need for this, or we don't deplete it more.
Um so you're saying you're okay with using it for the sidewalk for something that's already funded, sort of shell game, move the money.
As long as we can get it back, right?
Right.
Exactly.
Then later, we can move the sidewalk budget to the town hall budget.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, as long as we can figure out how we can get there reasonably quickly, because I mean, again, we don't wanna get ourselves in a position where we're all ready to go. And all of a sudden, we don't have enough money, especially if the bond bill or whatever requires us to have a certain amount of funds in hand.
Well, that I don't think, I don't think something uh something that says, not shovel ready on 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 any of these things, but. We're we're much closer, and I think especially if they're already funded. Um.
Right.
That we can easily move money around.
Right.
For that um.
Yeah, I think just a couple of things, I think, to um equi- initiate that Phil raised. There was a time um. When state bond bills did require a match. That process has now been changed. So there is no required match, but certainly having our own funds and showing that we have some skin in the game. Um does make us a stronger candidate. Um um both of the state delegates that I've talked to have said that. Um so I think certainly that would show that we've got. Something behind it and makes it a more, you know, marketable project, I guess, because they're always gonna get more requests. I think one of the challenges right now with Waverly is obviously for a variety of reasons that has been stalled out um. And you all know what those reasons are. Um so I I think it's just, there are some, a number of parameters that have yet to be defined. That will drive the cost of that project.
Yes.
Um the other thing I would just mention just more in terms of fiscal planning is I have been working with um Clark Gazar. Um they did sort of a pavement analysis um the last, at the end of last year, end of well, last fiscal year. And I've asked them if they can kind of take that analysis and sort of give us a five-year plan for what we might need to do for road pavement. Just so we can sort of look at the numbers in the capital budget and really kind of see what we're gonna need for the foreseeable future. Um so I think there are a number of things that are kind of in flux right now in terms of kind of building out some other budgets.
Timeframes are, like we have the mid-year coming up soon, and when's the the next fiscal year one?
Um I was gonna introduce the mid-year budget adjustment ordinance in December, um just cause I was hoping we'd have a, you know, a little bit more information on some projects. So that would mean you would adopt it in January. Certainly you can change the budget at any time. Um we'll be starting the budget process for FY twenty twenty-four, which begins July first. I think last year we had our budget work session in February. Um so everything's gonna come glom together in a way.
It was one year, I think, where um. Really came down to the wire, it was done really late, and I think Jerry Lee requested get it started earlier, so it sounds like that's gonna stick, so we might be starting in February.
I would um write tentatively, I think probably have another work session just to talk about your priorities in February. Um last year, we. Well, this year, last fiscal year, we introduced the budget adoption ordinance in March and you adopted it in April. I think the goal, which I think makes sense, it's difficult probably, uh particularly if you're a new council member, to have to weigh in on something substantive for the budget, so. We made a concerted effort this calendar year, like many jurisdictions do, just to get the budget adopted before the election.
Right.
And I would, I mean, as long as you all are okay with that, that's sort of the budget calendar I'll keep in mind and will plan to work with.
Okay, so probably three months in a row, February, March, April.
Yeah. Uh I wanna keep us moving. It's it's nine fifteen um. Council member Bennett, do you have anything you'd like to share with us? Um or can you actually, can you please update us on 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 what's going on with the Arboretum Committee?
Sure, thank you. Um thank you to those who participated uh in the tree walk on Sunday, November sixth um. Uh Phil Normandy, our town arborist, um provided a walking tour um explaining some of the history of the arboretum. And why it's important and what some of the future planning is. Um thank you to the town office staff, Barb in particular, for the work on the uh invasive vines project that is making great progress. And also, as you noted, um at the committee meeting this week, um the committee will be exploring future expansion of that effort. Um and then also the committee is starting work on um language for uh tree protection. Um that could be included both in ordinances and clarified in permits that are issued by the town. Any questions?
No, not for me. Um, okay. Council member Bosch.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um the town has received a um request, a petition for speed bumps on Waymouth. Uh by a number of uh neighbors um who would like to see a number of. They requesting two speed bumps on Waymouth, um which dead ends if for just direction purposes, it dead ends toward um park side. Uh with the concern that um uh out of town, if you will, cars, delivery checks, what have you. Go to the end of the street and um speed out. The, we have tight streets, um and there's concern for safety um. Uh as well as just traffic and speed uh et cetera. And um they're asking for, um since speed bumps have provided a petition, a map, et cetera. Um at this time, I think though, we would need to uh do some research um and I would propose. Uh the hiring of a traffic consultant um for perhaps um reviewing the situation on that street. As well as a number of other streets, um including um the the Waverly intersection. Uh up here on this, that side of town.
Yeah, um Barb, we've talked about um engaging a traffic consultant for a number of things. What's? Um i- is that something you've been able to uh make inquiries about?
Um yes, I had reached out to Jason Azar. He gave me the name of a couple firms that they have worked with and would recommend. Also, just sort of looking around some of our neighboring communities, there seems to be a former. Um traffic engineer with Montgomery County who has transitioned into consulting work. I haven't had a chance to follow up with the colleagues to see what they, what they think of him and what kind of work he's done, but I can certainly do that. But Jason did give me two firms as recommendations.
So so where we're looking now is is traffic consultant, what's what's a a, i- is there really a problem? What would be the appropriate remedies?
Right. And I think certainly I can say, um I've worked in, if you've ever driven into Como Park, they have more speed bumps than anyone known to mankind. Um you know, I think it's one of the things in talking to Donna about it is certainly when you sometimes put speed bumps. It can tend to push traffic to other streets, so I think looking at that such request a little bit more holistically, just to make sure we don't solve a problem for someone. And then create it for another neighborhood.
There are concerns also with just the topography of that street in particular, has a bump in it, you know, with this. Is it appropriate, you know, traffic wise and and safety wise?
Yeah, and I I think it's sort of a chicken and the egg thing. Um like I say, having dealt with a lot of speed bump requesting to Como Park, sometimes someone might be. Generally supportive, but they're not, the location can matter, so even if you deem them to be a good measure. People can have different feelings about them depending on whether it's in front of their house or not. Um so I think just getting some idea of placement would be helpful as well.
Seems like it might tie in with the the lighting study that sounds like maybe happening too. It's part of the trick with the speed bump, you need. The light generally near us. See it, so we kind of have to change. I have heard that thing too, that even from a Brooklyn resident before that. That people that live at Lower Brooklyn end up going around Montrose because they avoid this this speed bump on.
Well, and I think, yeah, I mean, I I think they they definitely have their uses. I would say if you talk to any. Worked in some cities that have, um you know, but offer fire and EMS services. worked in some cities that have, um, you know, but offer fire and EMS services. They don't typically like them because it can slow down. And I think that's kind of a concern on the part of some residents in some of the communities I've worked. Um. You know, because they just want emergency vehicles to be able to get to them as quickly as possible. Having said that, I also worked in one community where they someone came out and someone decided to create their own speed bump because we wouldn't give them one. So they actually created poured asphalt onto a public street to create their own little bump.
Oh.
Um, would said uh traffic consultant also be able to uh advise on? I know that there are types of speed bumps, if you will.
There are.
Uh, you have speed bumps and you have calming humps. Uh, I learned my myself, so.
Have speed tables too.
Oh, there you go.
Yes, they're over.
Um, so what is, you know? If it is appropriate, what is it, you know?
Right.
Maybe it's not as something just a little bit more.
More gentle and maybe not as jarring. Yes, we could certainly ask them to look at that.
Um, ba ba ba, Councilmember Max, what can you tell us about what uh Archives has been up to?
So, um. Claire said she was gonna talk about the fact that it's our hundred and twenty fifth anniversary coming up for the town and whether the town or any of its committees want to do anything formal to acknowledge that. Um. She said nobody's really talked about it yet, but it's something that we may want to discuss in terms of what we think we may want to do or talk to other of our committees about what they'd like to do. Um, she's been working on a presentation that will use for the grotto site with Dick and uh Peggy, Peggy and Dick Pratt, right? And I think we're working on finalizing a date with their family so that we can do that in sometime around Thanksgiving, I think. Um. And I think that's and I don't think we need to do a proclamation at this time. We're just gonna have a somebody's gonna read something and we're gonna have a bench with a sign on it and the grotto.
Um, what is she working on any any new displays in the post office?
She didn't mention it. I don't know.
I thought she did. Okay. Um.
Oh, I think she's gonna work on a Chevy house.
Right.
I think because I think Nancy Walls wants to do a walking tour about the Chevy houses, and she's gonna work on the history of the Chevy houses in Garrett Park.
We're coming up on the hundredth anniversary of Chevy houses, right?
Yeah, twenty four. And then, um, so I heard from Mindy Teal that from Archives before, like she been thinking about this hundred and twenty fifth, or actually, oh, sorry, yeah, excellent, mother and daughter, um, Karen Tia. Then I think she said that the committee had been talking about a little bit. So I told Nancy Walls about that. And I think the two of them got together and they were trying to bring up just a little bit of brainstorming to kind of see, see if it could get something going on a hundred and twenty fifth year. And Nancy was originally thinking put the house tour at the same time, but now they're thinking might be more more leaning towards do it in that hundredth year of the Chevy house versus um, it's just more related to that versus the hundred and twenty fifth. And it may be too many things to kind of group together anyway. And and it would be really hard to get that by next year. Uh, a lot of work to put that together, so.
So from a big picture, um, do we want there to be some official town event? Or do we want to allocate funds for um something? Uh, do we want the town to organize it? Do we want to try to pump this to the Citizens Association? And and have them or the Women's Club or the Women's Club, something else? Um. Or do we want there to be something official townwide? Not official, but you know. Do we want to put our money where our mouths are? Do we want our, uh, do we want this to be sort of spearheaded in the office? Um, or out among the committees?
Would it be good to get more brainstorming by the committees or?
Yeah, I think we should ask the committees if they'd like to chime in and work on something.
Okay.
I mean, I have committees of.
Yeah. And then we we would need a date. What what's the date of this hundred and twenty fifth?
Sometime in May.
May is good.
Oh, May's warm.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Uh, okay. But it's coming up pretty soon.
Yeah.
That's true, six months.
What do we do for one hundred? Did we do anything for one hundred?
Oh, I'm sure.
A lot. Oh, yeah, lots.
I'm sure. I mean, I would have.
Yeah, yeah, there was a big centennial celebration. There were, there was a house tour, a garden tour.
Fun.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, and Councilmember Max, parks and open space?
Well.
Anything beyond what?
Yeah, the big thing I think is that Lizzie Glidden Boyle has come up with a plan that she's gonna present to Parks and Open Space tomorrow to tell us what her Arboretum Committee is thinking about doing something around the tennis courts and the open space.
So I that is kind of a sticky situation. Um. We that is beyond the scope. So originally, uh, stop me, Barb, if I'm, if I go too far, if I don't go far enough. Uh, originally, the question to Arboretum was we're gonna put in sidewalks. What plantings do you want to put, you know, pick some flowers, pick some tree species that we'd want to put there? And and that was eight, ten months ago. And this is this sort of ties into this idea of developing a framework to help communicate, help communicate with the committees is that that um morphed into a much bigger brainstorming process.
Well, they spent money too on a design.
Yes, the town spent money on it.
That nobody's seen.
Right. So Joanna, um, the committee ended up, which we reported two months ago, I think, um, just going back and providing recommendations related to the sidewalks so that they could then provide recommendations for plantings around the sidewalk design. So that's where the commit, the Arboretum Committee is now. But since they did do some or since Lizzie's um landscape architect from the University of Maryland also did some conceptual drawings of ideas of um that could affect the park space there. The the Arboretum Committee referred her to share that with the possible committee just for consideration.
Correct. So my.
It's not an official proposal. It's simply letting them know here's an idea for your consideration as Parks Committee.
So my concern is that the more uh the more we talk about this idea of an amphitheater, the more questions we're gonna get as a council of saying, well, why didn't you consult me? Why didn't you do this? And it it becomes a conversation that is not ever come here to us and that I would be hard pressed to want to take on at any point in the near future. And so I don't want, I'm concerned that there's going to be the impression that with Lizzie presenting this that it there's some momentum built that I'm not interested in.
Well, why did we spend the money to hire this designer to do the plan?
Can we talk about that, Barb?
I don't understand why we did that. If we have no intention and.
We we didn't do that. I I don't remember.
We didn't. We didn't.
Somebody.
Actually, I did, I did discuss it with the council before the committee used their arboretum funds to do it. I I don't think there's a problem with looking at future ideas and putting them into the hopper for future consideration. It would have been nice, actually, when we first started planning for the sidewalk um to do a more comprehensive plan for the sidewalk and the park area, but we didn't. I mean, I don't think there's a problem with Lizzie sharing that information, and I think it would actually be detrimental. And I can't see any positive benefit of hiding that information away. Um, if there, it exists. Why not share it with the Parks Committee? And actually, the Parks Committee requested it. They came to their reading committee meeting and requested that that information be shared with the Parks Committee.
Correct. And and and.
Anybody was saying not to share tomorrow, I I heard, I guess. I I'm a little stuck. I I don't even know what it all is. Like I hear once in a while something about an arboretum or not, I don't remember, uh, amphitheater.
Yeah.
Um, something about a landscape architect in design. That that was probably five years ago, I was saying in this hall that we really should have a comprehensive landscape architect designed for that space. And it seems like some things may have been happening, maybe towards that goal or maybe not. I don't know, but but I haven't seen anything. I've asked to see it before. I still couldn't, so.
So I guess, I guess the question is I mean, we still don't have the sidewalk. Even like in the works. I mean, it's barely in the works. Do we want to slow that down so we can look at a comprehensive? So we can have a comprehensive look at that space? Or do we want to get the sidewalks done? And then we've been assured that that repairing that that replacing the sidewalks will not preclude any future work on that hillside, on that space. So.
Yeah, that that was kind of what, right, that was the way we looked at it is as long as the sidewalks were done in a way that we could do some planting that would be more beneficial and leave open other potential improvements to the park if if so chosen in the future. And that seems to be the way the sidewalk design is currently planned.
Agreed.
Correct.
Where do I find the sidewalk design is currently planned?
It's not been published yet because it's not been finalized yet.
Correct.
There's some unfinished.
I think when Arboretum um was having its discussion several months ago, and it was sort of unclear where that was going to end up and what their specific request would be, I asked Jason to kind of come to a halt in consultation with Phil.
Right.
Because we didn't want to have him doing design work and then paying to redo it. Um, I think as Jerry Lee has indicated, I think some of what came out of um the Arboretum Committee's discussions, which were very good questions, and Jerry Lee, feel free to jump in if I'm to speak, but um originally, I think, uh, when the town was doing the safe routes to school, for example, the specific request was for sidewalks to be four feet. Arboretum approached me and had some uh a suggestion if it could, if the sidewalk could be five feet in this stretch while still maintaining the recommended minimum five feet planting area for trees. And I went back to Jason and he said that was doable. Um, so I think that Jerry Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, with those words, it's sort of the kind of issues at this point that Arboretum just wanted to confirm. Also, as you noted, wanting to make sure that the way the sidewalk construction would be done, that it would not preclude the option of adding amphitheater seating at some point in the future, if that's what the mayor and town council wanted to do. Did I miss any of the key points, Jerry Lee, from?
Right, exactly. And the reason the committee ultimately recommended five feet sidewalk width and five feet minimum planting space is that the five feet of sidewalks in such a heavily traveled area, the concern was that people would step off the sidewalk and damage plantings.
Right. And there was also some discussion about if we, as we widen the sidewalk from the existing four feet to five um in consultation with Jason, which has also got shared with Arboretum as as well as Phil, obviously, but that we would widen it in the direction of the the curb. Because if we tried to do it closer to the hillside, we were gonna get into having to construct um some kind of retaining wall or something that would add cost. So I I feel like we're in a relatively, Jerry Lee, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a few issues that I was still looking for some clarity from members of Arboretum, not that many. And then I think Phil and I had a conversation before the meeting about kind of picking a a lighting fixture. We wanted to try to address the darkness um kind of at that part part of Waverly um as part of the project. So we kind of next big step, I think, would be to settle on that lighting fixture so Jason can incorporate that.
Right. Does the lighting fixture, the designation of lighting fixture have to be made now? Because I.
If if it's to be installed as part of the project, which I know was Phil's preference, then the actual fixture needs to be spec as part of the bid documents.
So why does it need to be part of that project?
Be.
Just to make sure that it gets done or?
Partly to make sure it gets done and partly because the thing is we're gonna have to put in some underground electric. So when we're sitting there tearing up for the sidewalk, we can go ahead and just drop in the conduits and so forth. But in order.
Before the sidewalk goes in.
Before the sidewalk.
Right.
Correct. So that where we're not digging up plantings, we're not digging anything up. We go ahead and get all that infrastructure in place. The other thing is we have to consider is the photometrics, you know, is how much light does this thing put out?
Right.
Uh, and I'm talking about looking in some of the low flying, you know, like waist high type things that are not obtrusive. And so.
We don't have any more, we don't have any of that anywhere else in town.
Correct.
Um, so I don't know that that's the best option. Um, there's been a lot of, a lot of a lot of work on lights that I know that there are filters and there are other ways to have lights of the similar fixtures to what we have elsewhere. If that's what we want, maybe we don't. Maybe we want a different type or right there. Um, a a lower um structure. But I don't think it's necessarily the wrong thing to have the larger overhead lights.
And sorry, Donna. If I may, um, was there ever consideration given to solar lighting?
No, and I would be against it anyway because of the maintenance and the fact that we've got a ton of trees in the area and the they usually, the brightness, I mean, they're getting better, but still, I think the maintenance and the brightness are two things we have to look at. And um, I've got some solar lights and I can tell you on cloudy days, they don't always last as long as they should.
No, I'm I'm sure at an industrial level, solar lights are quite different than the ones we bought off of Amazon. Um, and I'm just wondering if um there is researcher.
Oh, they they're out there for sure.
I think as a town, solar lights would make sense.
But if we've got those big trees along Waverly, the solar lights aren't gonna get enough light.
I'm not sure they would.
But the things, we don't investigating that.
I'll look at it for sure. I can come back and tell you what is, what's there.
But also preclude any uh installation of lighting for the sidewalk, if that was the route to take. But if not, um, obviously, I do understand what you're saying about the wiring.
Well, the other thing too is that is that you could have the concrete work done because we're gonna have to put a base in for something, no matter what it is. And so it's better off if you got sidewalk contractor plopping a bunch of bases for lights.
Steve, was there something that you wanted to, I thought I saw you starting to speak up about this?
I I can't remember. Um, I I'm still trying to wrap my head around it. Like things just happen so much differently in this town than anything I've ever experienced. That literally worked on hundreds of millions of dollars of park projects before, but I can't think of any of them where we had committees after committees of like residents. It's not that I don't, you know, appreciate all the volunteerism or anything else. Like we we're usually ever given a task like, um. And I worked at an architecture firm where we had landscape architects as consultants, we had engineers as consultants and electrical engineers as consultants, a lot of that stuff figured out. This probably was pretty rare that we didn't exceed what was asked, but in ingenuity and like thinking things through, like what's possible. Um, but it seems like it just works backwards here. I wonder if is the town really getting the best, like, long term benefit for this? Because we we never had a project where we're continually in conversations with um committees about that. I think the closest thing I ever had to it was like a a big committee. It was probably representing two million people. Not too many, but maybe half a million. And that was on a big project to kind of like do the vision for it. Never like the details of every little thing.
Should we, I mean, should we just ask Jason? Barb, should we, I mean, can we just ask Jason for his recommendation? Of what lighting? And I mean, because I I'd like to get this moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, Phil and I talked before the meeting. I did send him a link um for the Ballard lights. Um, but I think working with Phil, we can certainly, you know, ask Jason if he has any recommendations and specifically about Donna's comment about solar lights. I did want to mention that Phil Normandy has indicated that he does not believe some of the the larger trees on that block will survive the construction. Um, so basically, I guess, as we were considering kind of the planting strip, he wanted to go ahead and share that. So I think there will be kind of smaller trees, at least initially, but obviously trees grow and you know, what might be a good idea at one point in time may not be later as they get larger. But yeah, I'll I'll circle back around with Jason and Phil, certainly keep you in the loop as part of that discussion.
Yeah, and I'll have something else like look at the.
Sounds good.
A point, just just to go back to the point I was making, it wasn't just about like the lighting, but like more of that other stuff, like we're talking about lighting for the sidewalk, but I always picture it as we get a lot of visitors to come to town to go to Black Mark Bistro, they all park there.
Right.
Tends to be a little bit of an older crowd too. And then you can barely see when you get out of your car. So it may or may not be limited to just what works for foot traffic, because usually do that, like a a low light that just lights your feet. Um. But a lot of those kind of things, we were never, on any of those projects, we were never like into that kind of detail of coming from like a like a resident population. It was usually like you had a lot of professionals working on it and kind of figure it out. And again, like exceed the expectations like you.
So, yeah, I think the lighting actually came up was um came up from Phil.
Yeah.
Basically trying to address a need. Um.
Right.
So but are we, are we at such a point in this project that um I mean. I mean, by asking our engineer, by, by asking our professional, hey, what do you think? And having it be driven that way. Like, how can we, in this particular project, Steve, how can we sort of make sure that we are not being short sighted, that we're thinking of those things? Is there a question that we can ask Jason? Are there, is there a, a line of?
Is Jason the right person?
It's a good point, cause that's kind of why I suggested, nothing against Jason, but like, that's why I suggested it was.
He was gonna hire somebody.
Yeah, it was when we spent the money to put the, pump the bone underneath the sidewalk. I was saying back then, it's just gonna go back to where it was, and that, that was kind of an example of, it needs a professional level. You know, and thinking to figure that through, I was suggesting back then, look at it, not just the civil engineering project or the landscape architecture project, cause it's not just the sidewalk, it's. It's also a place where people get out of their cars, how do you walk across that, you know, that median strip or that planning strip.
And the hills also eroding.
There's a lot more to it than just a sidewalk, so that's, when it feel like that, if it's a substantial amount of money and it's gonna be there for a couple decades, at least, then. It should be thought through, not just as a sidewalk, but as the edge of a park and as a place to get out of your car and.
And I think that's kind of where Arboretum, once again, Geraldie, go ahead, jump in, but I think that. Was sort of where Arboretum started, I think was that this was an opportunity to maybe beautify the area. You know, not just look at it as a sidewalk project. Um, I think when we start getting down further into the park, I know there was an issue that had come up. Um, that I think Geraldie and I communicated about earlier today. Um, kind of came up, there didn't seem to be a lot of clarity about what the problem was we're trying to solve. Um. I think we're gonna set that aside, but I, I think also as far as the sidewalk project. When does something stop being the sidewalk project and become something entirely different than a sidewalk replacement project? And also, we have an MOU with Park and Planning. Um, we have certain responsibilities, but they own the vast majority of that area. Um, so I think part of it is, if there's things that we're interested in, should we be the ones trying to sit, decide to do them? Or if you all agree, for example, amphitheater seating, is that something we should be approaching Park and Planning about?
Who owns the hill down?
I think it departments, which part of the hill you're talking about?
If you go down Waverly and the hill that's uh next, the hill adjacent to the sidewalk.
Well, I think it, once again, I think if you're in Phil, you, you're kind of our historian here, but I think if you're talking about the portion of the hill that's closer to Penn Place. Part that, I think that part of it is generally owned by the town, the closer you get to Montrose, that, that part of the hill is owned by Park and Planning, I believe.
Right, yeah, I mean.
I've got a map, but I'm going off memory here.
Roughly, it's, it's where the basketball, is it, is it a straight line from the basketball courts?
It's roughly speaking halfway down the basketball court. So if you took the basketball court, you split it in half and then you just drew the line right up.
All the way to Waverly.
All the way to Waverly, then just figure everything, looking down the hill, everything that's on the right is gonna be owned by County Park and Planning, everything on the. Left could be owned by Garrett Park.
There's six lots total, so there's three that count on those three that are complaining of us, and then I think the middle of it lines up with the. Whatever that end house is on Montrose, that the corner of that lot is also the corner of those.
Are the, between the two, three. Are the six lots, ten thousand square foot lots or twenty thousand square foot lots or?
Tenish, but I think, yeah, I have a list of it somewhere, but yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying somewhere, so, I mean, with regard to this sidewalk, do we want to slow it? I don't know if we want to slow it down or speed it up. Um, if, if speeding it up is a bad idea because it doesn't take into consideration enough of. Um, the environment or enough of what needs to be addressed. Um, I, I guess I'm sort of at a loss.
We have to start with another designer.
Or, or we don't just, I, I'm not sure what it means, but it's.
Can I raise my hand?
Please.
So, um, you know, uh, the Arboretum Committee um kind of contemplated how much to push on expanding. The design beyond the sidewalk and, and as I mentioned, they kind of retracted and said. Reminded themselves that, hey, our, our real focus here is the tree planting space and, and um. They decided to put the recommendations for the sidewalk design that would most benefit the tree planting area. And if the sidewalk itself, the way it's being designed, won't preclude future design improvements for the park area. Then that any park improvements can be planned in the future. In reality, we don't have room in our budget right now to make park improvements. Because we have so many other things in line ahead of it. We have the Yandel Park, Yandel Grove. We have the dog park request and some potential safety issues there. So, um, part of our discussions were simply, right now, since there isn't funding. For park improvements there at Waverly Park, it's best to go ahead and get the sidewalk done. But make sure it's done in a way that doesn't preclude future park improvements, and that's kind of the way I would look at it.
That's what we, and that was what the design went towards, was basically that, um, was to go towards. That's why when we had the discussions, we figured out how much space was available, how much could be used, then we talked about the five foot, and we. Decided to encroach on the space towards the curb. The whole idea was to try and get this thing repaired and get the thing moving, but not preclude. Anything in the future with regard to plantings and so forth.
But you still have been picked out of light fixture.
I'll have that done by the end of the week, so.
I, I think we're probably in a pretty good position, um, and Phil and Geraldie jump in here if I misspeak, but I think we're in a pretty good position. Once we have the light fixture identified and as Phil indicated, you know, there will be a photometric study done, Jason has someone in mind. To make sure that whatever we select um will appropriately light the area without impacting any of the neighbors. Um, I think some of the concerns that have come up even this evening have been things such as erosion on the hillside. I'm not sure that we need to, as part of a sidewalk project, address that. I think that there will be markups. Cause inevitably, the sidewalk contractor is going to subcontract this out, so there'll be a series of markups that go through those contracts. If we have a concern, for example, about erosion on the hillside, I would suggest, depending on where that erosion is. That may be something that we just work with Park and Planning and ask them to address, especially if it's on the part of the park that they own. Cause that's not one of our responsibilities under the MOU, it's to, to rake leaves and to mow and things like that. So like, I, some of this discussion, I think, is getting into a realm that it's important that we get the issues on the table. But I also think it's important that we don't take on issues that may not be our financial responsibility.
Agreed.
So I, I would suggest that, you know, I, I continue to work with Phil and, and Jason Azar on the lighting fixture. Um, certainly, we can sh- share that with you. We get the photometric study done if no one has any visceral reaction to the actual. Look up the lighting fixture and that we just kind of get things moving again.
Have we put it out for bid yet?
We can't because the lighting fixture, um, we needed to resolve some of these other issues. I think both the, the very valid concerns that the Arboretum Committee raised. And, and as well, I think the concerns about lighting in that area, which Phil was the one who highlighted and suggested that we address it as soon as possible as part of the project. Which I think was a good suggestion.
And to that end, part of the lighting was to be able to, to have light go over towards the parking spaces so that there was. Something there rather than just being totally dark.
Yeah, and I do know that, um, one of the things that Arboretum asked me to convey to Jason. Um, you know, I think it's a difficult area to kind of do a lot of plantings, because people are sort of stepping out of their cars, so things get very squished. So one of the things that came through with Arboretum is to say, can there be stepping stones or something so that. Once people are out of their cars, they're not just walking on grass and tree roots and things like that. So I, I think there have been some good suggestions that have come out of this process.
Yep. It sounds like the project's in the schematic stage of design, okay, not, not close to bidding, yeah, no.
I think if we can get through this kind of, I think we've crossed some other hurdles. Like I say, I was waiting for clarification on a couple things. I think, as I mentioned, one of them, Geraldie, and I think I agreed that we'll just set that aside. Cause um, I'm not sure anyone from Arboretum remembered what exactly the concern was when I asked about it. I think if we can get the lighting done, um, you know, I had suggested to Jason that I would like to try to keep things on target so that. The bid documents are issued like in February ideally, and so that basically we get the bids back, you all have a time to approve it. And we still get this, the spring construction schedule. So that's sort of what my plan has been. I think, you know, Phil, maybe once you kind of look at the lighting, the options, and if there's nothing there that you like, let me know and I can go back to Jason, but. Maybe you could just share that with the group as well, so if anybody has any concerns, I think just more aesthetically at this point. They can get flood sooner rather than later.
I intended to, to publish amongst the group here, cause I've already come up with several, but I want to see what.
Okay.
Jason's got to, but no, go from there.
Anything else that we need to uh, address tonight?
I'm wondering where are we with the accessory dwelling unit? We have people who are waiting for the approval of that, I think, for their parents to move in.
Um, I think that's, I think that particular case is, is, is in process, um, not stalled.
Yes, I think what they decided um to do is to make some accommodations to their renovation of their lower level. So it, it, it avoids that issue basically, um, and that's what I was told. So I think it's still something, um, I know Landy's Advisory Committee, Stephen are working on, but that individual is not being held up at this time.
Yeah, and I guess, um, there's also, I don't remember exactly when, but there's gonna be a, a county historic preservation. Um, pop with Tacoma Park and we're probably gonna be invited to, to all of us, like all the residents if we wanna join that, um. Can't remember exactly when that was. Did you get one of it?
I don't think so, it's related to eighty years.
Yeah, it's been eighty years about the treatment of them, so it's, it started as something, um, I guess. For Tacoma Park and we're just to be able to kind of like tag along Garrett Park, um, government and residents if you want, so. I'll, I'll dig up what that date is and then send it. Can't write myself a note, cause my, my cat just died.
All right, well, um, in that case, the time is nine fifty-two. That was my little gavely thing. And we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.